Board of Directors, Monterey Peninsula Water Management District for Wednesday, December 23rd, 2020 at 9:03 a.m. Can we have roll call?
Director Potter?
Here.
Director Adams? Director Adams? Director Anderson? Director Paul?
Here.
Director Riley?
Here.
Director Anderson? Director Edwards?
Here. Okay, can we please stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Are any additions and corrections to the agenda?
None.
None, thank you. And we had Director Anderson just join us. Okay, oral communication. Anyone wish to address the board on matters now listed on the agenda that are within the purview of the district may do so only during oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all other items at the time they are presented to the board. All communication is open.
Michael Bear, please present your comment.
Good morning, board. Happy holidays. I just had a thought, just a question about stormwater capture. Do we capture the water off of the airport runways? That's a tremendous capture field. I could imagine, you know, you get a couple inches of rain. And so if that's, if that's happening, that's great. And if it's not happening, I put it in the suggestion box. There's a lot of water to capture off the airport runway. Thank you.
Chair Edwards, I see no other raised hands.
Arlene, next item on the agenda will be a report from the district council on the December 14th, 2020 closed session of the, of the board. Mr. Laredo?
You're on mute, Dave.
Okay, good morning, members of the board and members of the public, staff, and early happy holidays to everybody, please. The board did meet in closed session at the end of the last meeting on December 14th. There was one item on the agenda that was considering pending litigation, the lawsuit of CalAM versus Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. This litigation challenges the district's prior certification of BEIR relating to the LAFCO application, the annexation of the, and the assertion of latent powers. The board did consider and did provide direction in terms of the defense of the matter. And one of the first item on your action item tonight this, this morning is related to that in terms of the engagement of special counsel for that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Laredo. General Manager, what are our action items now?
Yep. So item one is following on Council Laredo's comments is an engagement letter with the firm of Shoot Mahaly Weinberger. You have interacted with them before in the memorandum regarding the SEIR for pure water Monterey expansion. They're a very well experienced CEQA firm and litigation firm. And while you gave direction to approach them during closed session, this would be the formal approval of incurring the expenses and the bringing them on as our representative.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this item? Before I go out to public? If no questions at this time, we're going to open it up for public comments in three minutes. Arlene, please. For everyone.
Michael Bear, please present your comment.
So I, I read the complaint from CalAM, the 25-page letter of the complaint. And I don't know anything about this law firm, so. But what I would like to say is like the strategic stance. So I felt that the complaint is largely frivolous. There's maybe technicalities, I don't know exactly, you know, the idea that whether or not the proposal for operation is needed to be included in CEQA or not. I can't imagine, I mean, I understand their argument that in one place you talked about making changes to the, the way it's operating, but that initially you're going to just follow CalAM's plan as much as you can until you get in there and see what needs to happen. And so it seems to me that the CEQA will need to happen at a later date, specifically what, what changes to fire hydrants, et cetera, you might be making. What I'm concerned about is if this is a quote slap suit, is that you're just defending yourself and then CalAM faces no consequences of loss. They're going to, the ratepayers are going to be paying the whole bill on both sides of this thing. You know, this is a battle that the ratepayers, you know, provide funding for the district and provide funding for CalAM. And so I don't know if there's any way, I'd just like to see it be aggressive. Is there any way that when you're fighting this thing, you can say, look, the shareholders should be paying this, the ratepayers shouldn't have to pay this, that, that you're legal, if you win, more legal fees should be charged? That CalAM, you know, they're going to continue to sue probably. And if so, if you just defend yourself and win and there's no consequence to CalAM, they don't, you know, they don't feel any impact from doing this lawsuit, then they're going to continue. So I just think you, you know, need to be as aggressive as possible in, I don't know, counter suits or something, you know, like to really, to really up the stakes so CalAM has something at risk. You know, that you not only slapped on this one, but you make them think twice about doing it again if it's a frivolous suit. So I would hope that that strategic stance could be communicated to the lawyers. Thank you.
You.
Chair Edwards, I see no other raised hands.
Thank you, Arlene. We'll bring it back to the board. Any questions? On this, Director Riley, go ahead.
I guess this is the, I don't know, it's a legal question or general manager question. The status of the application to LAFCO. Is, is, is our application complete? And does the, this, does this representation, legal representation cover what we might still have to do in the near future?
Right. So this representation does not cover future litigation over the LAFCO hearing process, if there is any. So we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. This is purely on the petition for writ that was filed a couple of weeks ago. The LAFCO application is relatively complete, but we've pulled it back. I'm going to, between the two holidays, between Christmas and New Year's, I expect, I want to get it in front of our council, Shoot Mahaly as CEQA council, and Ru Tanan Tucker as eminent domain council before we submit it. There have been changes to the two operating plans, which I'm probably not, well, I'll send the full operating plans to the attorneys, but I'll highlight the pages that have had changes. Just as we spoke about during our board meeting, October 27th or 9th, whatever date that was, that you received the reports, but you did not adopt the reports, subject to additional changes. So we have that advantage. So they've not been filed in any formal setting. They will go with the LAFCO application, which at that point in time, that'll be the working documents for proving that we can.
And Mr. Stoll, this is not, this is not on the agenda. And I think you've given the board a general context of where that's going, but I would caution against further discussion on this agenda.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? From board members? If none, okay. Vice Chair, go ahead.
Just a quick comment. I think the, the caller, Michael Bear, makes a very good point about, about not forcing the costs of this unnecessary litigation on ratepayers. And I'd just like to say that as a board member, I think we will be looking for ways to make sure that that does not happen. And I thank the caller for, for that point. I also just want to say that although I don't, we attorneys from Shoot Mahaly, personally, I know the firm, I know of the type of work they do. And, and they, it seemed like a very good fit for the type of legal representation we're looking for. So I thank the general counsel for, for making the arrangements with them. Thank you, that's all.
Vice Chair, Director Riley, I see your hand out.
I move approval of the engagement letter with Shoot Mahaly and Weinberger.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Director Riley, second by Director Potter. Just on the second for discussion. General Manager, do we need any additional funds in this? For?
We, we may for our CEQA consultants, if they're asked to provide any more documentation or ultimately any testimony. As of right now, those expenditures would probably be within my spending limit. So I did not bring it up on this item. But if it goes to appeal or if it goes to expert testimony, then we will come with additional.
All right, thank you. Mr. Laredo, could you give us a little bit of a cost? Just, we need a number out there to let the public know how much this might cost us and what we are spending, being transparent.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's a little difficult to pin this down with precision at this point because we don't know exactly where, where this going and all the details. But I would anticipate that this cost could be at least six figures, $100,000. It could go upwards of $175,000, perhaps even $200,000, depending on what, on how complex the litigation becomes.
Thank you, sir. We have a, a motion and we have a second.
Just, Alvin, if I might just speak on the second.
Go ahead, Director Potter.
I am familiar with this firm, they're preeminent in this area, and I'm glad to see them for consideration. I think one of the things we should appreciate is the fact that they've reduced their hourly rates significantly of almost $400 an hour for a partner and also upwards of $200 for an associate. And I also think that the fact that they agree to pay all transportation costs, lodging, parking, and meals, as well as hourly rates for money to travel, is very helpful. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Just one more closing remark from the chair. Hey, good work on getting this on the agenda. The, the district will be moving on. We're not going to let lawsuits hold us up. So, General Manager, I, I hope by the first of the year, we can have that LAFCO application into the board. And we can do all the CEQA work and everything that needs to be done, if we have to do it, before we go into that March meeting, settlement hearing. So keep us up to date. We've got three months to get this right. So we got those items, I hope we take care of them and get it done. Not saying that we're wrong. Okay. Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Director Anderson? Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Paul?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Aye.
And Director Edwards?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Motion passes six zero, thank you. General Manager, what's the next item, please?
The last item, item two, is a continuation from our December 14th meeting. The board requested a little additional time to provide comments on the letter. I did receive extensive comments from three directors, which are reflected in this version. And then two directors gave me additional minor cleanup comments. So without having seen those additional minor cleanup comments, your decision is whether or not you want to send a letter in this structure, in this form, subject to minor cleanup that's been provided to me in a few days. But the, the scope and structure and main points of the letter would not change.
Thank you. Any board questions at this time? Go ahead, Director Adams.
Dave, can you come up with any reason why we would not send a letter such as this that we should know?
No, only, only that there's a high degree of likelihood that they will simply ignore it or say no.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Dave, the, the. Let me, let me rethink it, I'm kind of confusing where I was going on this.
Any other board questions? Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Has the question of who may request the opportunity to make a presentation under this state water resources control board rule, has this arisen before?
No, it has not. And the, you know, the July 2016 version of the CDO pulled some prior CDO language forward. This is where the, which it was pulled forward was tweaked slightly because previous one was issued by the state. This one was issued in response to an application from several of us applicants. And so previously, it was in the form of, we're dictating this to you. This version in 2016 was in the form of, well, the applicants have asked for it and we were responding. And so it, it wasn't crystal clear, this is the first time.
Thank you.
Potter, go ahead, sir.
So Dave, I was noticing here in the letter that it says very clearly, CalAM made no efforts whatsoever to engage its fellow applicants on this matter. That's in the, basically the first, the second page at the start of it. Then on the end of it, it says, we would very much appreciate your encouragement to CalAM to continue to engage collaboratively. Now, that's in quotes, I understand, but then my thought would be to drop the, to continue and just say to engage collaboratively. It's kind of, kind of contradicts the earlier statement. I understand that it's come from the original order, but still.
No, you're absolutely right, you're not continuing if you've never had it.
Exactly. Thank you.
Director Row.
My, my question has to do with the meeting with the, the different applicants. Have we reached out with the applicants to, to meet with them ourselves? Question number one. Question number two, could this letter encourage the applicants to support our letter separately so that the state water board might get more than.
Could you repeat the second part of your question, Director?
Could we encourage the applicants who are not CalAM to support the position of the district in terms of having a hit by the state water board?
Okay, yeah, thanks. Yeah, so just to refresh, the applicants are California American Water, the Water Management District, the Mayor's Authority, which is no longer in operation, the City of Pacific Grove, and the Pebble Beach Company. So that kind of leaves, you know, the City of Pacific Grove and the Pebble Beach Company. We have not encouraged them to participate with us. We can certainly do that. You know, I, I guess my belief is we're kind of leading the charge and we have a bigger jurisdiction covering pretty much the whole service area. So we just didn't think to, to reach out to them.
I, I don't think that's a bad idea, though. I think George is suggesting that that might be good, strengthened collaborations, I'd agree.
Yeah.
Any other board questions before we take it out to the public? If none, Arlene, open it up to the public, please. Three minutes.
I don't see any raised hands, Arlene, do you?
No, I see no raised hands.
Thank you. Let's bring it back to the board. Any other questions? Go ahead, Director Row.
I just moved approval to authorize General Manager to send this letter to, with, with edits as necessary to the state water board.
I'd like to second it, but I would also like to include the comment that he would approach both the Pebble Beach Corporation and Pacific Grove to see if they would be willing to either sign on or write a similar letter to it.
I agree with the addition.
Thank you.
Okay, Director Anderson, I think you had your hand out.
I did. First, I want to apologize for being late. I thought the meeting was at 9:30, my bad. I'd like to ask Dave if he gets, if Pebble Beach Company heard about this? Has anybody reached out to you about this letter? Do they know about it? Have they read it? Have they said something to you about it?
They have not said anything about it. They did receive it, I believe. Yeah, David Stivers received a copy of the, not this letter, but the original letter from the state water board. So they're aware of that discussion. But I will, I'll separately contact David Stivers and probably Tom Janison today for them and the City of Pacific Grove. I think we've got a line on their city attorney and the, the mayor, so I'll contact them today.
Right.
We also have a council member observing.
Okay.
Good.
We have a motion and on the second, and I'll speak on the second. I appreciate what the general manager had done by writing in and general counsel by writing this letter. I appreciate the board input into this letter. One thing that the district is trying to do, and I'm glad you brought up involvement of the others, is to show leadership on this. There's no reason why we should lose a thousand acre feet of water. We didn't do anything wrong. We didn't do anything, we didn't stop it. The court stopped it. CalAM stopped it. And not to, to help us out by, by, by not saying anything about this besides, oh, we're not going to take any action. No, they are wrong. They are purely wrong in that. I hope this letter can even go up to New Jersey. So they know what the people are down here and how they spending their stock money down here by, by running the customers down. It's a thousand acre feet that we shouldn't lose. Next year, it might be a reason to lose it, but this year, we shouldn't lose it. And I'm glad that we are fighting back. I'm glad we are fighting back, the board. Director Potter, go ahead.
So to the, to the fact that the mayor's water authority no longer exists, Dave, so why wouldn't we want to have other members sign on and also agree?
Yeah, I, I agree. And, you know, I did have all of them on our distribution list. So I think when I send it to them, I will encourage them to join on. Or are you suggesting encourage them to join on prior to sending?
All of the, all of the above. I mean, I can't imagine they wouldn't want to join on. Common problem across all the district. Also, would you, you wanted to use the lodge committee, I'll go ahead and create some outreach advocacy to state level, to the board itself?
Yeah, we can do that, sure.
All right. Well, if that could be included in the motion, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'll accept that as further motivation of the motion.
Director Adams, you was on mute.
Thank you, I said so will the second.
Thank you. General Counsel, could you read the motion over so we can be clear on it?
I understand the motion was to authorize the general manager to send a, this letter as amended with comments as long as the general intent is not modified to reach out to the other parties to the state board action as well as to reach out to the Pebble. That would include Pebble Beach Company and the City of Pacific Grove and to reach out to the remaining cities to see their interest in supporting this.
Thank you. And, and Dave, let's just make sure that, General Manager, that this letter is not held up by going around trying to get other people to buy in on it. I, I, I think that with them knowing what's going on, they will have an opportunity to, to speak on this. And I hope that, I think you did put in there, we're like an answer. The first letter we sent out, we didn't get an answer.
Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Laredo. I, I didn't understand that this would be a joint letter, but this would be a letter of the district and that the general manager would invite others to support the letter.
Thank you. All board members clear on that? Okay, I see hands, hands shaking, thumbs up and everything. All right, roll call vote, please, Sarah.
Director Paul?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Aye.
And Director Edwards?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Motion passes six zero, thank you. If we haven't, does not have anything, we do not have anything else on the agenda. So, oh, Director Adams.
I, I just wanted to be sure that we were, we received copies of the amended letter as soon as we can, just for our own use as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. If no other items on the agenda, I would like to wish you all happy holidays and happy new year. If no other items on the agenda, I would like to wish you all happy holidays and happy new year. And y'all be safe out there.
Second.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.